Good evening and welcome to the City of New Franklin Council meeting Wednesday, November 2nd. We have eight first readings and we'll begin with Resolution Number 22R 61. Kelly?
Out there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cox.
We'll be opening a Finance Committee meeting at 6:01 and all members are present. Welcome all. Resolution 22R 61, a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund and declaring any emergency. And this is just our general transfer of the General Fund to the Police Fund, $325,000. Questions, comments, wave three? We are moving along. Next, we have Resolution 22R 62, a resolution approving and adopting the 2023 annual operating appropriation budget for the General Fund and all other funds for the City of New Franklin and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. We'll be asking for time on this and if I like to discuss anything, sorry.
Yeah, okay. You go ahead. No, I, other than it's really nice to be doing this and I appreciate the timing, I don't know if anybody has digested that big document or not, you know, if anybody has questions, you know, a good time to bring them up. We're definitely asking for time.
Yeah, give everybody more time to look through it.
There's a lot there.
Bring questions next meeting and, you know, if you have any, of course, I know Ms. Cook will always answer questions anytime, so they'll probably get an email or, I hope she doesn't mind me telling.
Okay.
Do you want to say anything?
The only thing I would mention, and only because you and Kevin were there for the, when we went through groups, there's a couple of different things because of the resolution that's on to add to our firefighters, there is a difference in their, in their personnel costs that reflects that. And then there's, in the General Fund, on the very first page of the spreadsheet, you'll see there's something in the lease, which we don't usually use for the General Fund. Right after we had those meetings, we had, some county came here with a meeting under the ad, integrated dispatch, and the costs of those, which we, for all of the county, and, and we went through all that. So there were things that we had to pay that we hadn't anticipated in our budget, so that's why that one is there. It's $50,000 because we each pay, each, there's five payments, and then a yearly fee that, that's split between the Fire Department and the Police. And this has, basically takes into account two payments because they had assumed that we had already paid one and we hadn't.
Yeah, this is a transition from, to type, to put us in consistent with most of the rest of the county. And, and in fact, we had approved an agreement with them in 2021. I don't know that they built this.
Nope.
And then eventually they built the COG, and, and during our COG meeting, they said, what's this about? And so we asked them to come out and they met with us and they parsed it all out. And it's not clear at this point whether, whether, we'll just pick it up at this point and pay five installments, but in any event, it's consistent with what was already approved.
This is a 2022 expense or 2023 expense?
2023.
2023, yeah. So we haven't made payments on it yet.
Right.
It's appropriate, or appropriate.
Right.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, next resolution I'm gonna take, I'm gonna talk before he starts. Resolution 22R 63 is a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Delta Dental of Ohio for dental insurance plan and declaring this an emergency. This has to do with the budgets, or the, the benefits overall. And I wasn't around when the committee was set up, but if I understand this correctly, each department, a committee was formed last year to review and go over, I'll let, I'll let you explain all that since you were here, I was at the meeting the other day.
No, it was, it was actually a few years earlier than that.
Okay.
That, when we were assessing our healthcare costs and what direction we wanted to go, what type of coverage we might want to have, and we formed a healthcare committee of the department heads and then the union reps from, from each department. And ultimately, that led to the reference-based pricing. We did that for a while with ELAP, that was a pretty significant transition that we made from a self-insured. It was a cost-saving measure. There were, there were, it was somewhat problematic for a number of people. And so we, last year, the committee got back together again and reviewed a variety of options as to council, and I think we had three options out there. We had the ELAP, the renewal with them, we had a fully insured with MedMutual, and the demo with, with Delta. And then we also had a self-insured hybrid. And the recommendation from the, from the committee, which council ultimately adopted, was to go with the fully insured with MedMutual and the demo with Delta. This, now, we were concerned, and if it's okay, some of these comments will also refer to Resolution 22R 67, which is the medical part of the package. When we, when we projected on the, what our expenses might be, and we chopped out the self-insured, I mean, the fully insured, we assumed that they would come at us with, and I know a number of people fluent in this from the business world, that they could try lowballs. And so we, when we went with MedMutual, we actually did a projection, we said, well, what if they bump us 25% the first year and 25% the second year? And what would the average of those three years be? And we averaged that out, and it actually was still going to be a cost savings from what we were already doing. But, you know, getting better news than that, the 25% on the health insurance, I'll save that for two or three resolutions down the road. So the, these were not put in this order in any, that's just the way they came to Kelly, and this is why we're getting this one now, and we'll do the health insurance thing and a couple, a couple more down the road. But, uh, this is the demo part of it. Crystal Ciasola, who is our, who's with Cornerstone and is our agent at this point in time, she can speak further to it. If you've got questions or I can keep where I'm.
No, go ahead. I, if I understood this correct, it was, is it an 8% or 6%?
6%.
6%.
The revised document, it has to be approved before it sends a revised contract into 6%. I, you have a sheet in your folder, I hope it's a last sheet, that identifies the deposit rates at 6%. Their contract retains, but it will be reduced to 6. That's the group, yes.
And these are for effect of January 1st, 2023?
That's correct.
How are you on time with this? Is this something you need to get approval on?
Well, I mean, if it can be expedited, it will help us get open enrollment set up. But, you know, I understand you have a process, so, yeah.
Right. I don't have a problem waving the three on this. I, and we'll get in, I'm gonna take the other benefit resolution.
You can go ahead and do it all together.
Okay. Let me go ahead and do that one.
Sure.
All right, let me go ahead and read that one. That's, so we're on the same subject, that's a good idea. Resolution 22R 67, on the second page of the agenda, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Cornerstone Benefit Services and Medical Mutual of Ohio for New Franklin's health insurance plan and declaring this an emergency. So now we can talk about this too.
Well, yeah, and what I'll say just in general, there was, it's been a high level of satisfaction both with the demo plan and with the MedMutual. And contrary to some of the experiences that people had had previously with what we had in place, the percentages, we'll let Crystal speak to that in terms of the percentage increase, but we had that, we reconvened and Mr. Daniels joined us for the healthcare committee, and they reviewed, Crystal presented to them, and at the conclusion of that presentation, they unanimously agreed to recommend the council that we renew with Cornerstone, MedMutual, and Delta.
I'd like to say too, I've had MedMutual and Delta, that I've seen my card reviewed for my primary for years, and have never had a problem.
I'm really pleased with it, David.
So, yeah, I don't have no problems.
Yeah, in the meeting, there was overall satisfaction with the whole, the whole plan and how it all seemed to work, and especially by comparison to what we used to have. And, and I, I really appreciated how the committee was put together and the fact, you know, I own a business, and our situation is more the boss has to figure all this out and, and then deliver it to the staff, and it can be confusing. Healthcare is complicated, as Crystal well knows, and as the members of the committee know, there are a lot of moving parts to how you can, you know, get them to break. So to have people from each department involved in that process, I think is very important to have buy-ins from everybody. I thought it was a nice process. Appreciate it being part of it.
Maybe Crystal can speak to the, you know, the percentages there.
Yes, well, we didn't start it at 15. So, you know, and, and, yeah, you have illustrations in, in your packet there, but, you know, they started at 32.7, so we just kept negotiating to get there. They're, they're very happy, Medical Mutual, and I know the objectives, as they were identified to be, of what the employees were looking for and what, you know, the city was looking for in terms of a plan, based on the mayor mentioning some of the problematic things that happened with reference-based pricing, which, you know, that can happen. So, again, we were able to get that discount or renewal down to 50%, so that, you know, as long as we're not shopping without a plan, so they're bidding more and going back and forth, so they wanted to feel comfortable with the reduction in shopping. But, you know, as we discussed in the healthcare meeting there, you know, last year when we did go out to market, the next, we actually had a 7.5% reduction going to Medical Mutual from where you were, and you also got rid of the reference-based pricing, so now you're back into the PPO plan, we have a very rich, robust network in this area, you know, Suma, Akron General, Cleveland Planet, I mean, it's University, it's very robust. So that took that problem away, and then the next closest load going back out of the reference-based pricing model was 23% higher. So going back and trying to wise the market would have, you know, would have lost the 15% in addition to, you know, nothing's changed, so that would have been an issue. So, you know, just moving forward, we talked about some other ways that we could, you know, help, you know, control this as we move forward to, because you do have a very rich plan, so there's not a lot of incentive for people to maybe, you know, use freestanding facilities for their lab and x-rays, you know, those types of things. But we talked about having, you know, maybe quarterly education, where we could just at least make the employees aware that, you know, anything that they're willing to do that will help these of us, that only helps the bottom line, but in the future, you know, what their contribution would be, would be consistent too. Then there's other, other things we can look at as far as plan, structure, and design moving forward, so.
Crystal, can you, I'm sorry, can you mention the one change that is a part of Medical Mutual about the prescription?
Yes, thank you. There is one, and it's across the board with Medical Mutual. For anybody that hasn't been, probably already seen this, but they are requiring, there's an incentive, if you do not, if you're getting a maintenance medication at a local pharmacy and you're getting 90 days, or you'll be charged a double copay if you try to fill up at a third bill. So that's across their block of business. Every person that would be impacted by that will be getting a letter 30 days in advance for Medical Mutual.
And the way to avoid that is?
The way to avoid it is just set up your mail order if you're on a 90-day prescription, and we'll work with each person that has questions on that during the open enrollment, which is, you know, the open enrollment is a month of December for a day or a first, or any changes, anyone with some major bad, illegal, leaning dependence, that type of thing, that's your opportunity to make changes.
And they're with Express Scripts? Do I remember?
Yes.
Express Scripts, okay, yeah, I, I have.
So, so, and, you know, it's, you know, they can continue, you can get a 30-day supply locally, you no longer, you know, any mail order that, that would be, you wouldn't use mail order for any maintenance medication.
Two things I know, okay, one is, when Crystal came to us initially after she finally, she got the numbers, and she beat them all the way down from 32% to 17%, I think Jack knows this, and I'm thinking, wow, that's beautiful, 17%. And Susan sits next to me and says, Susan, you can get them to go to 15. That's it. That's why we love you, Susan. So, and she went back and she got them down to 15. And the second thing I want to say was that, and Mr. Daniels, you mentioned that, you know, the cooperation level of, of the employees in that healthcare committee. We talked already about some of the things, as you know, that, okay, this will be good for this year, we'll have some continuity, as we go into the following year, we'll just maybe consider some of these, do some education, considering some cost sharing things, and our employees have been very much open and cooperative in that sense. That, when we went to the reference-based pricing, everybody knew that was sort of a new adventure, and the first year didn't go great, and they could have said at that point, then get us out of here, but everybody said, no, we'll try it again in a second year and see if we can work out some of the cases, and we couldn't. But that's the kind of cooperation we've been getting from the, from our employees and the union, so it's been very helpful.
And I appreciate the opportunity to work in the city.
I think everybody really appreciated working with Crystal as well. We have a, we have a winning plan here, so I'm okay waving the three to get this moving so they can lock in. You know, it could go for more readings, but there is a benefit to getting your healthcare moving and locking everything down. Okay. Any questions, comments on that?
So, I agree, I think we should wait the three because as Crystal mentioned, the enrollment will start December 1st. I go, I want to make sure everything's moved along with that. And just to clarify, we're looking at a 15% increase for the healthcare and 6% increase for the dental. I know we're just throwing out some numbers there, but I want to make sure everybody understood what was what. But again, I, just as Mr. Daniels is saying, I appreciate what you did for us, giving us a plan to begin with and then working with them and us to try to keep the cost as best as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So we will ask to wait the three on both.
Yeah. Okay. Now, it's back to you.
Hello, welcome back. Give us ten just a second. And we're moving on then to Resolution 22R 64, a resolution granting a weight increase for the New Franklin Finance Director and declaring any emergency. We're gonna ask for time on this. Moving on to Resolution 22R 65, a resolution to add three full-time firefighter, paramedics to the New Franklin Fire Department and declaring any emergency. And I just want to say from the beginning, I'm disappointed that we don't have anybody from the fire department here. So we're looking at three full-time. We, everybody knows what's going on in the world, trying to find good, good employees, good staff, and having part-timers and finding part-timers is very difficult. Opportunities for part-timers to become full-time somewhere else is, you know, the opportunities are out there for them, but we need to make that available here also, and that's, you know, probably the best way to, to staff our, our department. We've, are we expecting this to be promotions from within?
Yes, we're hoping.
Okay. And how will the staffing levels change as far as numbers?
What we'll do is currently we have three shifts, four full-time guys each, all that rotates. This will add a fifth guy to each shift, and then we'll be able to maintain four of the full-time guys on shift. Currently, we're only able to maintain three of the full-time guys on shift, and then we, we, we fill those open slots with part-time people. By adding this person, that's gonna take, by adding a person to shift, it's gonna take up some of those part-time slots that we haven't been able to fill as of late with, with our part-time personnel. Our per, our part-time personnel, our pool has diminished drastically. When we started the joint station with Clinton, and this was back in 2008, I, we had 20, we had 21 part-time personnel on our roster. After the, that was, and we pretty much tried to maintain that 21 number, so give or take one or two here or there, but we tried to maintain the 21. When we redid, when that 10-year agreement was up and we did the, the three-year, we extended it another three years with Clinton, we were down at that point, we were down to 15 part-time personnel. Again, trying to always maintain that magic number of 20. It seemed like 20 was a fairly good number for us at the time. At this point right now, we are down to 12 part-time personnel, one of which is off on medical leave, so we're down to 10 part-time personnel, and we're trying to staff it. If you remember, we shared that station, the staffing with Clinton, now we're trying to staff the West Side Station, and we're trying to do that with all of our own personnel, and we're at half the personnel we were then. So it's become just, and this has become, in the last couple of months, it, it's, it's hit a critical level for us. We have, and Lieutenant Ferguson handles scheduling of the part-time personnel, I'll let him just explain to you where we're at right now with November and December.
Yeah, so, actually, September was the first, first time when the guys, basically the part-timers are getting a little worked and they're taking less and less shifts. On top of that, they're, they're getting off full-time jobs other places. So they take the full-time job, so now they're, they're available even less. So in September, it was, we had nine four-man shifts in November, so that would mean we would have to go down to two, and two, two guys at each station, okay? So then in November, we had a total of, you know, October, we had a total of 14 four-man shifts, and then now in November, we have a total of 29 four-man shifts. So, and December will probably be the second.
If I could, where this originated, because this happened, I can kind of quickly write it up for our budget discussions, but we have a provision in the contract that provides for labor management meetings, and the union, and jointly it was determined, let's have one of those meetings and talk about the staffing. And I give the union credit for stepping up to the plate initially and saying to us that the two and two is, is certainly less than optimum, and that we really need that fifth person. We really need to make sure we get three people at this station, and we obviously have to have two at the other station, and, you know, how are we gonna be able to accomplish this? And, yeah, obviously to the credit of our, of our leadership there, everybody in the room agreed that, yeah, this is, this is the point it's reached, and it's reached the point where we have to do something, and, and, you know, what are we gonna do? Well, we can't invent more part-timers, and so, and, okay, well, we hired another guy, no, that doesn't work, you know? We hired three acts. So, you know, that's, that's a, that's a significant bump. There was a consideration given from the budget standpoint, we talked with the finance director, we know we're gonna, you know, there'll be savings on part-time, there'll be part-time savings, we had some buffer in the salary line, so we are confident that going forward, you know, we can meet the economic aspect of this. And it was asked, it's certainly for a three-to-five-year period, we're comfortable that we're gonna be fine in that regard. We have to measure this and go along. I'm not sure what the future holds, you know, when that number, when that 11, we took, so we're gonna have to keep an eye on that. And the, and the union, the minimum staffing aspect of it, which, you know, I've still, I've been here a few years, but I'm still trying to totally grasp fire skaters, but God bless these guys, that when we had, when we had four, the minimum staffing was three, and we had four in the station, and it, one, only one person could, you know, could be off. And, and under this protocol, as soon as we're able to bump to five, that's gonna be four-person minimum. So it, it makes it more difficult, it restricts some of the liberty that the officers would have in terms of days off, that we'll only be able to have one off per shift. And I thought about that, is what, these guys taking all this time? Well, they, they got, you know, they got vacation, they got comp time, you know, they got holiday time, they, you know, they're, they're gonna take time, they're entitled to those days off, and what happens when they're off, so. And, and the union was very quick to embrace that aspect of it too, because at least what they, what was expressed to us was they were more concerned in what was in the best interest of the people, to make sure that we're sufficiently staffed to meet, you know, whatever, whatever situations arise. Feel free to add more, but is it a pretty fair statement where we are?
When you talk about the shift, I'm pretty sure we talked about this, but the five, that's between the two stations, that's three here and two, I guess.
Correct.
And we talked about this here in the budgeting process and stuff too, the decline in the part-time model and the need for additional people.
Yeah, it's coming at us a little quicker than we thought, and I really look at it as a proactive move at this point in time, to get in front of this. We've got some part, we've got a pool of part-timers that we think will give us good people, but, you know, we wait around, we're gonna get hired away, so we want to get them out of here.
Speaking of wait around, do you, do you feel that this is urgent enough, we need to get this passed tonight, or can we, can we have a second reading?
I would, I, I think it's urgent enough, we need to get it passed if possible tonight, so that we can get the hiring process started.
During the, I think it was during the budget meetings, I had asked, you know, I asked dumb questions because I'm not a firing, about volunteer, you know, how you, and it was pretty eye-opening to me, and it's the same thing with school bus drivers, it's the same thing with police, any, any, any public employee and truck drivers, the same thing, is that the standards just keep going up and up and up and up and up. So it becomes one of those things that, what do you want to get all this big certification for, for a part-time gig? You know, whereas in your past, if, you know, heck, we had volunteer fire departments all over the state, and because those, those standards for training weren't near as time-consuming or difficult, so it made, it made sense from a volunteering for your community, probably those volunteer firemen made some money, you know, it was, it was probably economically advantageous to them. Now there's so much of an investment that it, it just doesn't seem to make sense. So this is, this is clearly the way your industry is going for lack of a better word.
And this, this will be the first increase in the size of this full-time staff since 1999.
Yeah, we, in 99, we had three shifts of three men each, we went to four, four, uh, four guys per shift, or four people per shift in 99, and that was, in, in 99, we were running approximately 1,000 calls a year, we're up over, we're right at 2,000 calls a year, 2,100 calls a year.
That's a long overdue to me.
So, we're going to take, hopefully, three of our part-timers away, and we're already down to 10, so now we're gonna be down to seven. Is that gonna be a problem in itself? And do we have any, anything, any hopes of getting a couple more part-timers?
We're, that's the other part, you know, we're, we're not seeing the, we're not seeing applications, we're not seeing the job applications coming in. We've had, I believe, Dan's also head of the hiring committee for part-time, so he can, but I think we've had, what, two this year?
Two this year.
And that's it. And here we sit in November, and we've only had, you know, that's the only two applications that we've, we advertised, it's on the, on our Facebook page, we put it on, on, you know, we've advertised it on the sign, we, we've, we've reached out to, like, one of our, one of our full, one of our guys right now is, is from the Career Center. We reach out to the Career Center and try and drum up, you know, to, to entice those people to come here. Back in 2008, when we went to the, the joint station with Clinton, we could figure that somebody coming in, let's, let's say somebody from the, the Career Center coming in, would spend about, we would train them, we would have them for about three years on average before they got hired by a, a fire department. This year alone, we're seeing that, that part-time personnel that we've hired at the first of the year aren't even making the year with us to leave to go to full-time somewhere else. So we've gone from a three-year span of having these people to work down to less than a year.
But that will, having the extra staff, will they take a little pressure off of them?
Yes.
Not that we don't need them, but that'll take some of the pressure off of them.
And the idea is, yes, we reduce the number of hours that are out there that, that are, have to be filled by the part-time. At least we're trying to cut that to a minimum.
So losing the few is?
Sure.
It's gonna probably balance us up, maybe, you know, balance us up a little bit because you're gonna have less shifts to fill, is that what you're trying to say?
Yes, that is correct.
Just be vacations.
And keep in mind with these part-time firefighters, they're not just part-time here, they're part-time at two or three different cities and working, so, so hoping that, that their open schedule aligns with ours is, is a challenge in itself also.
Yeah, and a number of our part-time people also work- Yeah, and a number of our part-time people also work, do work full-time. And I have a gentleman that works, is full-time with Akron but lives here. And he's very community-oriented and likes working here part-time. But again, he's working a full-time job there, trying to work a part-time job for us. Plus he's got family commitments and everything, you know, so he does what he can.
So what are your plans for the future? Are we looking at this being a solid level for us for the future? Or are we going to have to continue to increase our full-time?
I think we're gonna need to look at this down the road and we're potentially gonna need to look at adding a few more.
I, I agree.
And we're not alone.
You're right, exactly, that's what we need to us.
I mean, we talked, this is the, this is the main topic that we talk about at the, at the county chiefs meeting all the time. Is, you stole my guy, you stole, you stole my girl, you stole, you know, it just, it goes back and forth. Of course, it's light-hearted, but, you know, but that's the idea.
And you've always done a great job with your budget and the fire department is self-funded for excellent reason.
Thank you.
You guys have done a great job maintaining staffing, maintaining equipment, et cetera. And you've said that for this year, for twenty twenty-three budget, the funds are there. Are we anticipating that to continue over the next several years? Or are we going to have to start moving some money from the general fund to support the fire department?
We're, we're confident that we're good for, you know, easily the next three years.
Yeah.
I had asked about that, three to five year, maybe, mayor got back, we look good today. So I've got a question, not, not considering this, this resolution here, but another way to maybe kind of address the situation is, it seems like this is an issue that everybody's dealing with, all the other communities, and they, they've all got, you know, they've got the part-timers as well. Something similar to how we did with the cog, where we kind of join together. Is there a way we could join the, say, New Franklin, Coventry, maybe another fire department? And we essentially use those people enough where they get their full-time status? And then the bennies we divide up amongst the three, and then we have a pool of people that come?
There has been some early discussion on that. Well, not necessarily a full-time pool, but of a part-time pool of personnel that we can all use. Because, well, Lake Moore and Green does not use part-time personnel. Coventry has a few part-time, I think they're, they're down to, yeah, none now. So Lake Moore, I know Lake Moore's chief has thrown that out there for, for us and for the county to look at possibly bringing up a, a standard that we can have a pool of part-time personnel. I don't know that that's, I, it's something we're gonna look at, but I don't know, I don't.
Where I was going with this is, you know, part-time's great, but, you know, maybe I'm looking at it differently. But I think the people would like to have the benefits and that's gonna keep your retention, you're gonna stay in that position. So if you get into a full-time status, you're getting the benefits. And now you get your allotted time from each person. I didn't know if that's something that's thought about or not.
That is, yeah.
I was gonna go full-time.
Yeah, I think this way, if you, if the pool is numbered, try to retain that pool and then everybody gets a benefit from it. It's sort of a moving labor pool.
Yeah, that would go from station to, yeah.
Maybe carry that idea over to the.
I would, yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk about that. Yeah, and, and at least possibly to, you know, the South. Because the South, the South Summit Chiefs were already working very closely together.
Yeah, we do have the, you know, the cog, and there's other things that can be added to the cog, it has to be a part of the cog. It doesn't have to just be this family.
Other questions, comments? Comfortable wave the three. All right, and now let's talk about the fire department spending more money. Resolution twenty-two R sixty-six. A resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from A and R Electric for a standby generator at the New Franklin Fire Station Number Two and declaring an emergency. And this is for a twenty-four kilowatt generator and two hundred amps ATS for a total install price of thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Did we receive other bids for this?
We did. Yeah, the next closest bid was almost two thousand dollars more. And the problem we faced, we've been planning to put the generator in for quite some time, but availability, quite frankly, they haven't been available. And it's still pretty tight. What I faced was I had to actually get an update on this quote because they will only guarantee this for thirty days at a time because of availability. So I was able to get them to update this one. There is still one available, I can get it and get it in. And the thing we experienced on the West Side Station, for whatever the reason, we've had no less than five power outage as over there in the past year. He can be shaky as it is. But for whatever the reason, we were unaware that that occurred like that. So we have battery backup, battery backup's only good for about four or five hours. And that's just for the communications and alerting, but we still have no lights, no, you know, anything else. So that's where we're at with this. We did budget it, we had it budgeted, the money's there. And basically, the biggest weight was the availability from units and they are available now, so.
He's been hesitant to be discussed. And, you know, he's a, he's a resident in New Franklin.
I believe so, yeah.
His business is in Coventry, but he's a, he's a resident.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, no, they're good company. The proposal, the bid does not specify a brand, is it?
A Generac. It's a Generac, it's a Generac generator. We have several in service already that I oversee and we've had good service out of them.
Okay, all right. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I know we talked about this once again in the budget, I was trying to get, thanks for bringing this forward.
So we'll ask to waive the three on that. Am I about done? We did that one, moving on. Resolution twenty-two R sixty-eight. Resolution granting wage increases for certain full-time and part-time non-union job classifications and declaring an emergency. We're going to ask for time on this also. That will be for the finance committee.
Can I comment on it?
Okay.
All right, so just going back to that, I know it's always been missed on here about the board and that. You did mention earlier about companies finding employees and keeping employees. So I've always been the one that, you know, they could actually be organizing and starting to negotiate with them. It's always been good, they're, they have been evaluated, not this year, but I think last year, Mayor. And at the end of the year, and I've never had a problem with this and just, you know, we got good people. I mean, if you're the kind of person that says, just keep your rate low and just keep on training people and just run them in and out the door to keep your rate low, or pay you good people to stay. And we have good people that have been there for a long time. So I just, I'm always with them, you know, giving them, keeping them around, keeping, you know, price of wisdom's going up. So I agree with that, we got good people that are here, that can be compensated, so.
That's what I got.
So we will close the finance committee meeting at two thirty-nine. Thank you for your time, I'll miss you.
That was a long committee meeting.
It was a good committee meeting, needed to be done. I'd like to call to order the New Franklin Council meeting on November second at six forty. Stand for, thank you ladies. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly, would you turn the question over, or, sorry, roll call?
Mr. Cott?
I was reading.
Mr. Hargit? Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
President.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to ask for an approval for the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of October nineteenth. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do we have any public comment at this time? None? Then we'll begin with our first reading, resolution number twenty-two R sixty-one.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the financing committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-two R sixty-one.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-two R sixty-one.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero. Resolution number twenty-two R sixty-two, Kelly?
A resolution approving and adopting the two thousand twenty-three annual operating appropriation budget for the general fund and all other funds for the city of New Franklin and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution was given to the finance committee and we're asking for time.
Resolution number, time is asked and time is granted. Resolution number twenty-two R sixty-three, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Delta Dental of Ohio for a dental insurance plan and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was put to the finance committee and we're asking to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We make a motion to pass resolution twenty-two R sixty-three.
We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero. Resolution number twenty-two R sixty-four.
A resolution granting a wage increase for the New Franklin Finance Director and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We're going to ask for time on resolution twenty-two R sixty-four.
Time is granted. Resolution number twenty-two R sixty-five, Kelly?
A resolution to add three full-time firefighter paramedics to the New Franklin Fire Department and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee and we move to waive the three readings on twenty-two R sixty-five.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-two R sixty-five.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero. Resolution twenty-two R sixty-six, Kelly?
A resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from A and R Electric for a standby generator at the New Franklin Fire Station Number Two and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-two R sixty-six.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-two R sixty-six.
Seven. We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Resolution passes, seven zero. Resolution number twenty-two R sixty-seven.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreement with Cornerstone Benefit Services and Medical Mutual for New Franklin's health insurance plan and declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to the finance committee and we're asking to waive the three on that.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-two R sixty-seven.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero. Resolution number twenty-two R sixty-eight.
A resolution granting wage increases for certain full-time and part-time non-union job classifications and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee, like every other one. And we're going to ask for time on resolution twenty-two R sixty-eight.
Time is asked and time is granted. We have no second, third, or pending legislation. So now our favorite time is the mayor's report.
Sure, and I think, well, not necessarily my favorite time, but it is. Okay, we'll try and get it back quickly. I thank everybody who have participated at the grand opening for the pickleball. We had good representation by council, by the community, it was well over a hundred people there. It was joyful, I would say. And it had a nice, thanks to Mr. Powell, instead of having a ribbon cutting, we had a net cutting. That was neat.
It was neat.
And it was great seeing the folks out there. So we appreciate all the support, the harsh commission to the city council, to the public. And special thanks to Robert Keen, who has been, you know, he's a humble guy, but he does so much for the community and he really brought a lot of enthusiasm, not to mention the players. Ninety-year-old grandmother, pickleball player, so we appreciate that as well, Robert. And I think that's something that this community is gonna enjoy for years and years to come. It was kind of interesting seeing some of the, some of the families, without mentioning names, who were big time tennis people. That's just, you know, would, so they got to finally, well, they're still alive, they got to see the courts up there, so that's a good thing. Leaf drop-off will continue on Saturdays from nine AM to three PM. And that's, the funding for that is courtesy of some sort of a water reworks program. So twigs and, you know, nothing heavy-duty, you gotta show residency. But everyone benefits if you're able to take the time to get those over there to the service department over on Hampshire Road from the nature works aspect of it as well. So that will continue through the first Saturday in December.
That's no commercial though. No, even if you're.
No, no commercials, right, no commercials, yeah, thank you.
One other question, is that with bags or without bags?
Either way.
I can't see it from the eye that told my, thought they'd be either way.
No, either way, yeah, I've seen them come out with both.
Because if you're bringing the bags.
But he was just concerned you have to bag it and take it.
No, because they don't have to.
You might want to go.
Throw now.
I've done many times, not by the eyes of a person, but not for my ladies.
What did he say? He did not say no.
I got a sweet taste.
Get rid of them like that for years. All right, we are going to, once again, have our, I'll just call it an adopt a family program for Christmas. So we'll be looking for solicitations from the employees, from the unions, from the council. And everybody's been very generous in years past. And the practice is we adopt two families from each of the four school districts. And we let the school district make the recommendations to us. And most of the communities, they just prefer gift cards and that's fine. Northwest generally, they actually give us a list of stuff they want, and that's kind of fun too. So we will be, we'll, we'll get the word out on that very soon and be looking for donations as a way to help through the Christmas season here. And speaking of Christmas, it's hard, I made this note, I thought, I really want to talk about this already. It's the open house over at Tudor House, and that's just about a month away. So that's going to be Sunday, December fourth. Sunday, December fourth, at Tudor House, we will have a tent, we have, that's a great event. You get the choirs from the various schools. And it's just, it's just a great way to really kind of kick off that Christmas season, although, yeah. They kicked it off about three or four weeks ago, I think, at stores. So that'll be at the Tudor House. I'll give you, I believe it's noon, I think we start at noon, we go noon to four. I'll give you the, they know it'll be on the website. But please plan to join us Sunday, December fourth at Tudor House. That'll be our last event of the year at the house. We are continuing to work on obtaining an independent financial forecast. We interviewed a company and they sent a proposal. And we interviewed another one last week and they're sending a proposal. We had to scratch a little bit to find. uh, and, uh, and we interviewed another one last week and they're sending a proposal, uh, we had to scratch a little bit to find, um, uh, companies that, that do this, that people have had some experience with, that, uh, uh, you know, that could recommend it to us, but in any event, um, and the idea being that when we interviewed most recently, we'd, uh, plan on, uh, really trying to do about a ten-year forecast. So, the notion is just to take a look at where we are and what do we anticipate revenue streams to be and what kind of increases do we expect to see? That'll plug into our five-year plans and, and probably work to extend those a little bit, uh, with the cooperation of departments to try to give us an idea of, you know, where we're going to be. You know, the fire situation is a perfect example, you know, this, we're going to have to transition more to full-time from part-time, not just there, but over the police as well, uh, you know, so that we're prepared in advance, so, uh, um, once we weigh those proposals, uh, we'll bring something to council for approval. Um, each of them indicated that probably they would have a product for us, a report for us, um, within about two months or so. And, and we think that will kind of dovetail kind of nicely with what's going on with the comprehensive plan. That, um, we'd have that, um, to share, obviously with council, but, uh, with the steering committee and ultimately with the public, uh, that those projections, um, right after the first of the year, so. Uh, it's a piece we've been talking about putting in place for quite a while, and I think this is now's the time. Um, and lastly, I was notified by, uh, Clinton Mayor McDaniel, that the, uh, Clinton council passed the ordinance last night for policing services. So, uh, you, you got, we, we passed it the, the last meeting, um, uh, it, uh, it would be effective uh, mid-November, I can't remember the exact date, we, we didn't do it as an emergency, uh, and, but in any event, the contract is, was part of it, so as soon as we're authorized to, we'll exerise, uh, execute that contract, and we're very happy about that. I think it's a win-win for both communities, uh, I mean, I know it's financially, I, I believe it's really quite helpful to Clinton. Uh, it's helpful to us to be able to project to, uh, a little bit more monitoring planning, staffing, et cetera, so. Uh, so we will be, uh, continuing to do the policing services for Clinton for the next four years. Yeah. And remind my own contract, anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you both. Susan?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Comprehensive Plan Committee report.
We got Michael here.
Good evening, say everyone. It seems like we've taken a pause with the, um, comprehensive plan, but tomorrow is our Zoom meeting with all of our, um, members, and we will take some recommendations from the field, but as far as we're concerned, the latest and the greatest is that we're pretty much ready to push out the survey. It should be out by the eighth-ish, around that time, but, but then all the last minute details up now. Um, that means the yard signs, we'll discuss it tomorrow at the end, yard signs, all the marketing strategies. And I do want to thank Katie, she's real good at marketing, she does a great job. And our consultant has, uh, guided us to the best of, 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 of the contract as we requested from her, so things are still moving, there are some, uh, differences in opinion from others that, that want to see things move, but again, we'll take it to the whole committee tomorrow so that we can kind of like wrap that up, and that'll help, so, more problem.
If I might, as the survey committee chair, um, give you a quick update. The survey itself, uh, both online and paper version is finally put in. Um, there were some changes being made to the online version that, um, the survey committee wasn't even proud of, and ended up some confusion with the paper company because the two weren't driving, and, uh, there was a, uh, since the consultant was assuming that we were watching the changes she was making to the online version, but because we had all looked at it once already, we couldn't go back and look and see which, the changes she were making. Anyways, that's all finalized, the return envelope is finalized, uh, there's still some discussion and some differences of opinion over the cover letter and the mailing, mailing lists, um, there's no differences of opinion, it's just we need to make a decision as to how that's going to get worked, because there are a number of duplicate addresses in the mailing list, um, places where there's LLCs or partnerships or people operating a business out of their home, and so you have two or three surveys that would get mailed to a single residential address because of that, and so we have to have the discussion as to how we're going filter those down to eliminate some of that duplication of effort. Um, as far as the, the date that the survey was going to go out, we were originally planning to drop it on eleven-nine, but due to some of the changes that, uh, were made and the confusion and so forth, uh, latest information from the survey company is, is that from when we finalize the outstanding items, which we're hoping to do tomorrow, um, that they're going to need four to five working days to produce the base materials, three to four days to print the variable data, which is the addresses and the unique codes, and, and dispel, uh, fold, insert, and mail. So, we were originally figuring this, people would, uh, would have received the survey around the fifteenth of November, based on the drop of the ninth. Uh, that's probably going to get pushed back by at least a week. Uh, the original return by date, we were saying was twelve fif, in the letter was going to be, can you return by twelve fifteen? That's probably going to get pushed back by a week, but it'll still, should it result in all of the data being collected prior to the first of the year and us having the data available right after the first of the year to start analyzing. Uh, the, the only other thing that I'd like to ask is, I'm going to ask Mayor Adamson maybe to, uh, to reach out to the people on the steering committee. Uh, we seem to have had some attrition from twenty-two people down to only nine reply to the latest request for are you available for a meeting, and the meeting tomorrow, there's only going to be nine people from the steering committee there. So, maybe a little rah-rah, a little help generates some, some interest or re-energize, because it's taken us so long we get to this point with the survey, might, might be a little.
Yeah, sure, the job is nowhere, so this is the first.
I just found that out yesterday.
I talked to Katie a little bit about it, seemed to have just kind of ground down, and, you know, when you get groups of volunteers, there, there's got to be a constant contact, you know? So, that's one of the, one of the things we're having a meeting tomorrow, so hopefully, uh, we'll get back on track and start meeting and, you know? Uh, we also, I, I think this is, this is my opinion, just something I witnessed. I think there were a number of people that joined that steering committee that came to the first meeting and then said, oh, okay, you guys got this all figured out. So, they, they seemed like they'd joined because they were concerned, and then said, okay, I'm not concerned anymore, you guys are going to do this, so I, I don't know, the number has definitely dwindled significantly. We'll see tomorrow, hopefully, you know, maybe, maybe there are people who didn't reply to the, to the, what'd she call it, a doodle?
Well, she said there were nine that replied.
Nine replied, but that doesn't mean they won't be able to follow the link, so the email went to all the members, so maybe there are a number of people who didn't reply to the doodle. Am I saying that right, is it a doodle?
Doodle.
Okay. Um, that didn't reply to that, who may also join, let's hope.
Let's hope.
Um, I'm going to try, I have a phone list, and before the last meeting, I picked up the phone and called a whole bunch of people. Um, I'm going to do that if I can tomorrow, and just try to, it's personal rah-rahing. Uh, but yeah, you sending an email out to the group might help, because we really, that, that, that needs to be a big group.
Sure.
So, out of the twenty-two that started, how many actually were involved in it?
About everybody at the beginning.
At the beginning, everybody was. But I mean, for how long, you said like after the fir, you said after the first one, some people were like, oh, you guys got this.
There was a couple, yeah.
So, I mean, after, wasn't it fifteen people that kind of run the whole thing out somehow, or?
There was two that technically left.
I mean, it was, that's from a full board meetings.
It's a three-two, okay.
It was a two, yeah.
I think the attrition is due to the fact that the pauses that we've had happened to get the, the, uh, resolutions passed and the readings, so that drew out the timeline, and because we were silent for so long, it's just an accidentancy for the sake of the moment. But again, I do give credit to, um, this subcommittee with Mark and his, his guy that put a lot of work in, a lot of time, and it made some strong recommendations, and it'll be nice tomorrow to kind of get this wrapped up so we get out. That's just where we are, I'm a little, my wife says, you're so impatient, huh, yes, I am.
Well, we want to do this right, I don't want to do it bad.
Again, that's, that's the truth, but again, if we, as long as we stay, as long as we're making progress and we're moving in a new direction, the right direction, this is all part of it. And then we did, I anticipated this being a twelve to fourteen-month duration, so that was addressed in the beginning. Everyone that took, took that as a, as a mantra, understood that this was going to be along, again, to take our time to do it right and not to do it fast, so.
Well, it sounds like you made progress, quite honestly, Dylan.
We got.
If you really think about it, yeah.
Well, we've got a, a dedicate, I'm telling you, Mark is dedicated to this, he's, he's got a dog in this one, and he makes sure that it's well fed.
I think both of you gentlemen have been very good. And Jack, I really think that that is more of a people to kind of pull away from, it really is sometimes. Cause you think that other people are doing so much more, so you think, well, they don't need me, so to reach out to them, I think that's a good idea.
Sure.
Susan?
Um, actually, not too much new, um, just kind of an update on the audit, they're still waiting for that question one report, uh, to come in that has something to do with us, has to do with one of our third-party administrators, and then it goes to Columbus and they go through that check. But she did touch base with me to, this week and said, hey, we haven't forgotten about you, it's like, okay, well, that's good. So, that's why you haven't heard anything, just so you know. Um, then the other thing is just with this budget, um, for two thousand twenty-three, if you have any questions, please reach out. Maybe we can do it here at, at meeting, or we can do it in my office, or you can do it via email, or on the phone, or whatever, please, if you have any questions, reach out and so that you're comfortable with the numbers, because we, as, as you know, some of you know, there's a lot of work to, to come up with this budget, so, uh, so if you have any questions, please let us know, and I know the department heads are willing to answer any questions, um, regarding the budget as well, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Doing any old business?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple of things, uh, I know typically we buy our vehicles and stuff through the state ed, DAS, CDU, whatever that program is. What we're hearing is that there's not going to be a vehicle program, they haven't gotten, are you, are you guys aware of that? Do you guys have any kind of plans in place to still secure vehicles? And one of the things that we've seen is, you might find one a lot, but by the time you get approval to buy it, it's already gone. So, maybe just something just to think about moving forward, how we could do that. I've got some ideas I can share with you down the road, but, uh, that's, that's just something else to throw out there. Uh, may happen, have you ever done anything that may happen?
We did, we were set to do something, and then, uh, she, go ahead.
Well, you, yeah, you did the.
We did the, the proclamation.
Proclamation, and I was assuming that Katie's.
No, well, we arranged to, we wanted to drop off, and then there was those. Yeah, so, and we'd asked them to get back to us, let us know when a good time would be, and they haven't got back, but I'll, I'll follow up.
If, 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 man. If I may, since we were talking vehicles, just to give council an update on, uh, if you remember back the first of this year in January, we came to you about having our, our ambulance remounted. I was just advised at the beginning of this week that the company that's doing the remount, Lifeline Ambulance, who was, who we purchased it from, has finally gotten a VIN number, so we're probably looking at end of January, sometime in February, before we'll have that vehicle back. Yeah. All right, Judy?
Yes.
Couple things, uh, because it's old business, not because we've read these resolutions, but.
Do you want me to go through the state old business, or do you want to go under there?
No, it's.
Okay.
But anyhow, we, there's a, there's like three different pieces of legislation that we're taking time on, which is fine, the first one's the budget. And the other two, we really didn't really even have any discussion about, to at least let people know what we're going to be thinking about in a couple of weeks ahead. The first one was, you know, for our wage increase for our finance director, I mean, I, I'd like to hear that mentioned of what it's going to be, just so the people that are watching the meeting know, we did, we're going to discuss a little bit, we just kind of blew through everything, like, okay, now we're going to the next thing. So, can you just give us a little bit on that, Paul, what that's going to be?
Yeah, with, um, what with the resolution, we do, um, the current, um, salary for the finance director is fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Um, and, uh, I am, I sponsored this, and I'm, I'm proposing an increase in that to eighty-two thousand dollars. Uh, and that's done for a variety of reasons, the resolution itself, uh, lists some comparables for finance directors in some of the neighboring communities. Uh, I provided council also with some comparables around the state and the, um, the, the bottom line, uh, is that, um, it's vastly under, it, it certainly appears to be vastly underpaid, uh, here in the city of New Franklin. Uh, each city's a little different, the, the comps we try to pick, particularly from around the state, we try to, uh, pick out some cities that have similar populations, similar, um, number of employees to do the comparison. It, it's all going to be somewhat apples, I don't know if it's going to be apples to oranges, but it's going to be like Red Delicious to Gala, because everything's a little different, they have some different, uh, responsibilities. Some of these, we quoted, they have assistant finance directors, in addition to what the finance director is making, which we don't have. Um, so, but I do think that, you know, when I looked at it, uh, and I looked at the comps around the state, uh, there's nobody down there who we are, and, uh, um, and, and some have different qualifications for the finance director, and I understand that also. Uh, but, uh, still, I, I look at the, um, you know, the longer I sit in here, the, 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 the amount of responsibility for that position is pretty enormous. Uh, we're somewhere in twelve, thirteen, fourteen million dollar budget, this is a CEO. Uh, and, uh, not only are the, you know, the basic audit requirements, but also, uh, the, you know, the budgetary, um, the attention that has to be paid, um, dealing with the, the grants, is, you know, is, is a separate challenge. Uh, with the federal grants even more so, when we have the money with ODAD or AMATS and, uh, those types of grant money come in, there's just an awful lot of responsibility, an awful lot of expertise that's required for that position, uh, and it just seems equitable to, uh, to adopt a, a pay range that's consistent with what other communities are doing. So, regardless of who the finance director is, it seems to me that that's the appropriate salary, just to be equitable. Uh, certainly, um, I have no reservation to saying that if for some reason, um, you know, if, um, that, uh, that our current finance director left, um, and we wanted to attract somebody and hire somebody, uh, we're, we're going to be paying that kind of money, uh, at, at least. And if we, uh, and, and so if that's the case, if someone new would come in and earn that, why not the person who's already here? As it relates specifically to this position, uh, in, in our administration, um, there's not only that responsibility with the finance, but also because we're such a small staff, that we have to have crossover, um, experience and ability, and, uh, uh, to also be able to cover HR things, to be able to cover payroll things, and this week was a perfect example, um, due to illness, we're short-staffed, uh, and so there's some, uh, pretty significant, uh, payroll responsibilities. Uh, payments, uh, either in payments that come in to some of the different departments here in November, that have to be done with this payroll, and fortunately, we're cross-trained, we have individuals who's cross-trained to be able to do that. Um, so, uh, I think even specific to, uh, to our current situation. The eighty-two is somewhat of an arbitrary number, it's, you know, there's no magic number for it, but it's, uh, it's right there in the range, it's a little lower than, than some others, but, uh, but I, it's, it's, you know, it's a significant bump, but it hasn't been bumped for quite a while, so that's my thoughts on, on that aspect of it.
Okay, thank you on that, then we'll go to the, for the non, for the pay increase for the non-union members. Now, as far as our dispatch goes now, in the cog, are they under a, oh, that's, that don't even fall under us.
That's none of us anymore.
So, if somebody thought, I mean, because it used to be that was in the squeeze, the dispatch would just get that increased, so where, where are we at for employees on that? The number of employees and the cost?
Yeah, we have, um, uh, counting the finance director, we have six full-time non-union. Uh, we have, uh, two administrative assistants, uh, HR, uh, and finance director, uh, and, uh, we have, uh, our administrative assistant in the road department, and the administrative assistant in the fire department, they're all full-time non-union. So, there's, uh, a total of six of them. Um, the administrative assistants in the, uh, police department is part-time. We have, uh, that individual, we have, uh, Katie Smith, and we have our part-time, uh, zoning assistant, uh, are the three part-timers in addition to the police and fire part-time. So, there's, right now, I think, well, ten or eleven, uh, fire part-time, there's three police part-time. Um, I did a computation at the two and a half percent, for, for most of these people, it's, it's about a, uh, well, for the ones who, for three out of six, it's forty-seven cents an hour, would be the two and a half percent, that's what they, they get an extra fifty cents an hour, an extra four bucks a day, um, at two and a half percent. Um, uh, it's, uh, it's, and the intention is to be consistent. It's, it's, and the intention is to be consistent with the, with the unions. I absolutely have said in the past that we would, we would consider trying to move to a raises that, you know, performance evaluation raises, that I, I've given it a great deal of thought. A couple of things could happen, I don't, you know, there's, there's, there's so few of them that it's, it's, I have a sense that perhaps you may, you create more problems in the here. When the person sitting next to the other person, well, this one got this, this one got 4%, this one got 3%, how come? You know, we're creating a bad feeling over that. We have good performance evaluations. If, if all of a sudden the administrative people are getting 4% or 5%, the union's getting 2.5%, then they want to know what's up with that. So it's one way to do it and it, you know, it's, it's worked in the past and the folks have been satisfied with it, so that's why I proposed it the way that I did.
And I'm guessing assistant chief and chief would really like for their part-time fire to be a little bit more than 50 cents more an hour, because we have discussed keeping getting part-time, you know, and I don't know where we fall as far as part-time throughout the community, who's paying? Are we in a mid-range of part-time fire?
We're, we're in the lower third.
All right, so, I mean, we're talking about 2.5% to not count the part-time, we got six full-time, and you're talking about some over 40 some cents, you know, I, I just to me, I just don't know why we, this is going to be a hard hurdle to get over.
These guys are probably, they might be a little nervous.
Well, I've seen it, not, I'm just saying, I've seen it in the past, that people are just, they just don't want to see that, don't want to see the.
No, I got to correct myself, these guys are probably a little nervous because when I mentioned who the non-union part, full-time, I forgot them. I'll be chief, I'll be assistant chief.
I'd take it if you guys 47%, 47 cents, I don't want to be on that.
And I would note that, you know, in the past, we've done some, some pretty significant bumps. I'm trying to think if it was last year or the year before, but if you look at some of that prior legislation, we did not do the 2.5%. We looked at, at what other administrative assistants were making in, in other communities and we, we did some pretty significant step increases, some were two bucks an hour.
Trying to get them on the same level.
To try to get people to this point where we're kind of close, we're closer than we have now. We're still a little bit under, but this sort of keeps us moving in that same direction.
So I, I just want to make sure at least we had some, a thought, just kind of just went through them, if I look and they don't have a limitation, we're going to, and what's going on with that, what does that entail? So thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, David. New business?
Got a few things. First, kudos to the fire department, I've lived out here since the mid-'90s, I've never seen a fire truck in my neighborhood, past not long. That was great. So, and I'm assuming you guys have probably done that for years in Manchester, but you get further north, we don't see that stuff. So once again, thanks, that was great. I know the kids loved it and everything, it was pretty cool. Second thing I have here is the Tudor House event. A few years ago, when we had, everyone was locked down and stuff, I put together that event where we went around to the Tudor House, to Saint Louis and Carol to the seniors. Is there a way we can kind of incorporate something like that with the Tudor House that you already have carolers there? I mean, it's just, it's right down the drive there, we can get some of those that go there and they're all down there.
Yeah, make sure, ask, yeah, see if they're willing.
All right, that'd be great, at least look into that. I had a resident reach out to me, they live on Rexster. Apparently there's been some issues with ODNR wanting to do some dredging through there. There's been some delays, they were told it's going to be done this year, now it's, they were told next year, now it's looking like it's not be, it's not going to be done. There's a meeting tomorrow, I guess, at the Quanah Civic Center, 7:00. Kevin Noble, I think, is going to be there and I'm glad, I've had that just to get some more insight on that, but they may be asking for, I know it's state property and state project, but they may be asking for some assistance from the stages to talk to them and any influence you would have on that.
I, I talked to ODNR today about that specific issue. And I don't want to speak for them, I'll let them speak for themselves tomorrow. It was also communicated to me that there was some difference of opinion that one of the residents said, oh, several months ago, maybe in the spring, they, they thought there was only two to three feet of water in there and, and something, and they were indicated that, yeah, they're going to dredge. And then more recently, somebody came up, oh, there's plenty of water in there, so we don't have to dredge. The, again, I want to be careful not to speak for them, but the impression I was left with was that ODNR believes that that water level is currently sufficient and that it doesn't require dredging. I don't know.
I just want to mention, if somebody else, you know, somebody watching this is in that same area, they, they just noticed when we meet.
No, that's all.
Talk about, talk about that whole thing. My final new business is a business. So I know we had this, really talked about local businesses and stuff. The business I'm going to talk about, he's actually got two businesses to hire, it's the mayor's neighbor, Tom Smith. His original business is copper smith roofing. He started this actually when he was 14 years old. He was going to work with his dad and is his dad's own home improvements, he would go work on the roofs and stuff and start, start this whole business doing copper smith roofing. He's progressed through the years, he moved to Franklin, I think he said in 2014 with the business, he's actually lived in town for years. That's Tom, his wife Diane and his two children, he's got Andre and Josh. And, you know, he, he still does a roofing business, does the commercial and the things. One of the other things I thought was really fascinating is he's got a power sports business there as well and they deal with very high-end suspension. And Tom has a, a resume that is second to none as far as suspensions. And this, the company Owens, who the suspensions that he works on, they send him all over the world, he's worked on, you know, between the national and world, world platforms as far as these, you know, the best in the world, he's worked on their bikes. He actually, these people will come into town, they don't even know they're here and he's doing their suspensions, tuning, or these guys will place in the back, I guess they, they do some tuning. So just long story short, this guy has a very impressive resume, he's right here in the backyard and these, these world, you know, world competitive riders are coming here and, and getting their shrooms done right here in town, which I just thought was pretty neat and that's great.
I think it is too, and his place is on South Main, right, right behind West Caston, right?
Yeah.
And it used to be downtown South Main Street.
He was cutting with Mayor, I met Mayor Bullison, he took us toward to there and he, he's got like pans on work tables and.
Very interesting guy. And I, I asked him, how, how did you get the name Copper Smith? His last name's Smith, but how did you come up with Copper Smith? And he, he went into how he used to do church steeles, he used to do a bunch of copper work, copper gutters, steeles, and he was a very, very interesting guy to talk with and very impressive, so.
No, and, and I got, I watched it all happen, it's pretty neat too. He took me back as soon as he says, yeah, I hadn't thought about his dad in a long time, but his dad was Bernie Smith and, and he did, busy Bernie, busy Bernie, and he's just one of those hustling guys that did a lot of home repair and all, and that's.
And he's one of your neighbors, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's how Tom got started.
Really nice man though. Whole family's nice.
Yeah, very nice.
Do you have his phone number?
I, I do, I have to look it up.
I'm betting that Mr. Jim could look it up.
Well, sure. While he's doing that, in, in observance of time, while we have the fire department here, I've had a resident reach out to me about somebody in their neighborhood that has an incinerator. So I know there's open burning laws and it might, if, if you could do it quick, it might not be a bad idea to kind of give a little update to the community, people that are watching this, what our, what our open burning laws are in Franklin. And then I'm also curious, what, what this guy's saying is, you know, every Monday, Wednesday and Friday, this guy stinks up the neighborhood burning stuff in his incinerator. Now, it's a, it, it sounds like it's enclosed, it's a real incinerator. What, is there a policy, is there a rule on something like that?
There, if there are, the fire department has no jurisdiction within private residence.
Since it's contained?
Yeah, because it's contained and, and they don't put incinerators in anymore, but obviously some of the older houses still have them. But yeah, as far as those being in private residence, we really can't, can't inspect them, can't enforce any kind of regulations with us. As far as open burning goes, we follow the state of Ohio open burning laws. You're permitted to have a recreational fire, recreational fires have to be clean, dry, seasoned hardwood, they can be no larger than three foot by three foot and they can be of short duration. They do not have, they can't be a 24-hour recreational fire. They have to be four to six hours, something like that. Now, as far as we're concerned, we come out with, any complaints we get on open burning, we do go out, we do evaluate them and take a look at them. If they are within the, the, the Ohio, the open burning laws for the state of Ohio, we're, we're fine with that. If they're not, they're given, normally they're, they're asked to extinguish the fire and then they're given a pamphlet that explains all of the open burning laws in the state of Ohio, so.
And those are available on our website, if you come to the city website, Fire Department, the link's there, you can go right to it, or anybody's welcome to stop by the fire department, we have copies available, we'll be glad to hand them out and go over if anybody has any questions, give us a call, we have no problem explaining it, so. Thank you.
Did you find the number?
I did.
I think I've got one.
Oh, excellent. Copper Smith is great. Any other new business? I have a question for council. I got an email from April Briggs and she'd like to know when it would be okay for the residents down around the Tudor House to come in and discuss the noise issue. What meeting would be good?
Any good, any public meeting?
Does anybody have a preference?
Well, that we don't have 18 pieces of wood.
But I'll just tell her that they can come at any time they'd like. Do we have any public questions or comments? Mark?
Mark said like room room. Just one quick question, you know, we're taking time on the budget, but I have a question about, because there's two, two items that I didn't notice or didn't understand in the Parks and Recreation Fund. I know that the, to build the tennis and pickleball course, there was a loan from the general fund to Parks and Recreation to build it, and that was going to be paid back over time. Just curious which line item in this appropriation budget for Parks and Recreation represents the, this coming year's payback of that?
Yeah, let me look it up and show you what it is.
Mark, we did see that 75,000 in there, is that?
Yeah, so one was 75,000.
Is that, do you mean this label transfers out?
Yes.
What I had assumed, but I just wanted to be sure.
Yes, and, and the spreadsheet that the, that all of council has, it says right on there, we came in and advanced the general one.
Anybody else have any questions? And Paul, do we have an executive session to discuss compensation of public employees?
That's right, council chooses that, just need to move to adjourn the executive session.
So the Tudor June.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Scott? Mr. Hartman? Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Byderman?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
To discuss compensation of public employees.
Thank you.
So you know, this is an executive session.